I'd like to call this regular city council meeting on December 19th through order. Please call the roll.
Coos?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Bergeron?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Zingi? Absinthe.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Brings us down to public hearings. Public hearing on Resolution 192756, adopting the budget for the year 2020, appropriation from the General Government Fund for fiscal year 2020. Is anybody here to speak to that? Anybody here? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that, open public hearing on Resolution 192757, adopting the budget for the year 2020, appropriation from the Ketchikan Public Utilities Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2020. Is anybody here to speak to that? Hearing and seeing none brings us on into communications. We have some lay on the tables. We have a lay on the table in regards to meeting with Cruise Line International, CLIA, and a report on how that is moving forward with Mr. Tibbs. And then we have a lot in regards to a resolution request from Mike Woodward. That brings us down to persons to be heard. First one, Mike Coleman. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Stevenson and members of the council. My name's Mike Coleman, resident of Penneck Island, but I do get my mail in town at 700 Water Street. Last time I was here was first meeting in August, and at that time I spoke a little bit about the city's plans to go forward with a request for proposals regarding the port and admitted truthfully that at that time I was not well informed about how the council had got to the point where it was planning to issue a request for proposals. And I think I said something like my biggest concern was my hope for someday senior citizens' sales tax exemption because of concerns about how the RFP might affect the Wardco issues might affect the city's finances. Since then, over the past four months, I've much better informed myself about the RFP and the ongoings and so forth, and I will have probably much more to say about it at some future meetings than I intend to say tonight. But what I want to talk about tonight is just a couple things that have to do with events on Tuesday, this Tuesday this week. Tuesday was, from my perspective, a very eventful day in Ketchikan's history. There was more than one event on Tuesday. The one event, it was a public event, was attended by some of you, a chamber after-hours event. And the other one was not a public event, it was a smaller group, and nothing inappropriate about it whatsoever. At the chamber event in the evening, there was a presentation by a certain person, and those of you who were there will know, and anybody who wants to know can read up on about it, I'm sure, in a day or two, or ask each other about it. But late in the presentation, some questions were posed to the presenter, having to do with what he meant by partnership. And this all has to do with the port's request for proposals issues. And some members of the audience asked him about partnership, what did he mean by partnership? He attempted to answer that in different ways. Questions continued to be asked about partnership. And I began to feel like he was kind of having a hard time answering those questions. And I knew why. I know why. The reason why is because most people know what a partnership is. It's where two or more individuals or businesses get together, go into business together and share the profits. That's the common understanding of the term. But that's, I don't think, what he was talking about. And I think he took some unfair criticism for his attempts to answer the questions about what he meant by partnership. And I got to thinking back on all the reading I've done over the past few months about these issues, and it occurred to me that I had seen that term before. And where was it? Well, as far back as I can remember, a cover letter is submitted along with the city manager's budget every November, co-signed by the city manager, whoever it might be, from time to time, and the finance director. And so, you know, I thought, maybe that's where I'd seen that term partnership before. So I went back and looked at it again, both the cover letter to the 2019 budget and then the cover letter to the 2020 budget. And I find in the 2019 budget on page B5, it says, "The cruise ship industry is very important to the local economy of Ketchikan, and the city needs to position itself to accommodate the changing berthing needs of the post-Panamax class cruise ships." And then skipping down in the paragraph, it says, "The city council and management are exploring a number of options to reduce the cost of the city's investment in infrastructure and/or partnering with the industry to share the risk between the city and the industry." And then in the cover letter, page B5 again, coincidentally, to the 2020, this, the budget that's on your table, page B5, it says, "Now, more recently, last month, due to the uncertainty of the Wardco Dock Group development and the infancy of the city's RFP process to seek partners in the efforts to renovate its own berthing facilities, nothing has been programmed in the port's 2020 budget to address these challenges." So it was not just the presenter at Tuesday evening's public event that used the term In my opinion, it was a misnomer. It's not the proper characterization of any of the relationships that are being talked about. But it's also the city that has used that term, and I don't think properly in the context of anything that the city is seeking. It's certainly not what the RFP calls for. I've read the draft agreements. Those are not partnerships. Nothing close to any partnership I've ever drafted or read as an attorney. They are agreements, they would constitute contracts, but not a contract of partnership. So I would just say, I think the presenter took some unfair criticism. I think he and the city are both misusing the term partnership to describe something that is not. And so we should be all a little bit more precise in the terms that we're using, because it was the members of the public who posed the questions initially about what he meant by partnership. They know what it is and what it is not. So that's one thing. And I just have a very little bit more to talk about. As I mentioned earlier, Tuesday was a very important day, because there was more than one event on Tuesday addressing the same issues. One was public, another was not. And in no way am I suggesting because it was not public, it was inappropriate. It was a perfectly appropriate meeting. But my understanding of it, from what I have been able to learn, which is quite good about it, is that in my opinion, as a business owner that does business on the dock all summer long, what I depend on, that meeting was far more important than the meeting at the chamber, the chamber event at the landing. Far more important, of much more consequence to the city and to the future of city finances and operation of the port. I am asking, and maybe it's already been done, I don't know whether it's already in a manager's report or not, or is planning to be made part of a manager's report, I assume so. I would ask with the manager and anyone else who attended the meeting, you know which one I'm talking about, fully inform the council in a public manager's report, fully and comprehensively inform the council and the public about what was said in that meeting. Because from what I've learned, you know, you come out of a meeting and everybody in attendance has a different perspective. They go in with a different agenda, they say what they have to say, they hear what they hear, and sometimes they come out of it with different recollections, things that they wanted to hear, thought they heard, but maybe they didn't hear. All I'm saying is, I believe that meeting was more important to council, all of you. The public should be fully informed about it, because it was much more important than anything that was said at the public event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike, and I appreciate all the work you do on this and the interest that you take. The council needs that kind of feedback and continues, and you're right, there will be a report in the manager's report tonight in regards to that meeting and how it transpired and what was talked about in general. But thank you. Mary?
Hey.
Hey. Welcome back.
Chingo bells. Mary Stevenson, on vacation, little bit of sunshine, Hawaii for four weeks. It does everyone good. I'm going to start out with, very nice time in Hawaii, and the difference between them and us is 50 degrees. It's awfully hot. And so it's a no-brainer, I'm going to stay in Ketchikan. I came back in time for a November 10th Planning Commission meeting. Before them was an agenda about food carts and food trucks, and the Planning Commission is trying to decipher what it's all about. Somebody didn't do their homework, and so they postponed the vote until it was better researched. This goes back to August, in which food carts have been discussed, both in the borough as well as the city. It was thrown out there, well, let's see what the public has to say about it. And here it is, November, and the Planning Commissioners are having to vote on the verbiage of what is a food cart and stuff. And to me, when you throw it out there and let the public discuss it, to me, that's a public forum. A decision as important as this needs to have the public come together in a casual conversation, roundtable stuff, to throw out what is a food truck, what is a food cart, what are its expenses and competition against the brick-and-mortar company or restaurants, and so on. It was clearly obvious in that Planning Commission that the Planning Department Director has not done the homework. Long story short, I'm not going to belabor this, but I highly recommend that this get put on the joint committee that's due in January, February, to talk between the city and the borough, because you haven't asked the general public for any feedback, to my knowledge. And I've thrown out some photographs on that flyer that I presented to the Planning Commissioner, and they too were going, hmm, we haven't done our homework. So I put it back to the city. You owe us a public forum on something that is going to change the landscape for restaurants, for where are they to park. The planning borough was under the understanding as private, but the city could put it on public streets, and so on. So the borough is having to make an amendment, change the ordinance. I'm totally confused on all of that. That affects the city. And the borough Planning Commissioners were not all that clear on what you could then take their ruling and go around the back door and amend it the way you want it according to public favors. So do your homework, let's have a public forum, and let's discuss it.
Thank you, Mary.
Oh, I'm not done.
You're not done?
No.
Continue on.
On the budget, I don't have much to say about that, but I'm still concerned about our deficit, our bonds, and our infrastructure projects. Three very heavy things out there that this budget looked pretty lightweight and not discussing where you're going to dig and get from Peter to pay Paul in all of this. And the cruise ship RFP is not going to be the catch-all solution to that. If there's something been changed in private meetings and all, which has been sort of hinted in Charles Barkley's letter to the editor last week, it brings to mind that we need to be above board on our deficit and who's going to pay for it and stuff.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thirdly, I'm a victim, once again, first of a vehicle hitting me in the crosswalk, and now I've been burglarized while I've been enjoying vacation. First off, I went on and got an account with Airbnb to let somebody stay in my apartment. Unbeknownst to me, it turned out to be Spencer Hill. Think about it, think about it. 22-year-old gentleman from Washington who had $1 million of narcotics in the bank account box. He was in my apartment for two weeks, had a blowout party for Halloween. Pink feathers were found on the floor. And also another gentleman, well-known family, drug addict, well-known burglar, proceeds to break into my storage unit, where I had put all my valuable things in so that my house guests wouldn't have access to it. So this gentleman broke into the storage locker and got all my good stuff, my jewelry, my coats, this is brand-new, I had no winter coats, and so on. So drugs is an issue. And homeless are given social services, but they're never given petty cash to go about and pay for their basic things, so they go out and steal. So part of me wants to hand out a sign-up sheet so that you all can sign up for it, because I'm sure they're going to want to know your address, because they're picking off us one at a time. They got in my car, and he got into my storage unit. And because he's connected with Spencer Hill, because he's in and out of my apartment building, they're connected. So it hits close to home, and when it happens, it hurts. It hurts. So thank you very much, doing a great job. Have a nice holiday and enjoy the fruitcake.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Riley?
Good evening. My name's Riley Gasol, live at 812 Monroe. I'll keep it short and sweet, as usual, the couple reasons I'm here, but the main reason is to address the property tax increase. Again, express my dismay with that. I bought my first property four years ago, and to my recollection, this is three out of four years now that my property tax has gone up. One was because they, whatever you call that when you-
Assessment.
Raise everybody's value, yeah. So I know, I read the article, went through the numbers, looked over the budget, and I know we've got to come up with more money for more things, but, you know, you might think, oh, it's only $125 a year on a $250,000 home, but when it's year after year, and, you know, we all know how much everything's going up, it does take a toll, you know. So if there was one thing I'd like to say to you guys, is maybe sometimes consider just kind of chilling out on the spending a little bit. Going over, you know, three new cops and three new fire positions, seems to me like maybe we don't always need to be boosted up, so just wanted to address that. And then another thing I've kind of been wanting to address is that over the last few months, trying to keep up on this whole deal with the cruise ship dock and whatnot, I'm sure it's been addressed at prior meetings that I wasn't here, but it seems to me that we're hurting for money to expand our dock for the bigger ships and blowing up that rock out there and all that. And I'm sure it's been addressed, but the whole deal of not increasing our cruise ship mortgage rate from 1991 to this year seems pretty unacceptable to me, and I know you guys haven't all been on here since 1991, but it seems like that's a little bit negligent to me. So there's my complaints, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Riley. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the council tonight that didn't sign up? Seeing and hearing none, that'll bring us on to the consent agenda, but before we get to that, in regards to the agenda itself, I was informed that we're going to be pulling item 15B2, is that correct, Colonel?
The IBEW executive session was correct.
All right, so that will not be happening tonight. And on the consent agenda, there's a lot of things on here, but not a lot that we can do with that. So anyway, I'd like to move 6A2, which is the appointment to boards and commission. I would also like to move 7B1, which is the exemption procurement and program content to KPU TV. And then I'd also like to put on consent 7B4, the budget transfer exempting procurement of the extrahop reveal network security system. And then 7B5, the budget transfer again for exempting procurement of the Vision 1 network security access system.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Then moved and seconded, any discussion in regard to consent. Seeing and hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Read the items first.
Yeah, please, read the items first.
Approval of the minutes, regular city council meetings of November 25, 2019, and December 5, 2019, and a special city council meeting of November 26, 2019. Adjustment at vacation leave approval, customer service representative running the day. Change order number one to contract number 1904, update aerial photos and typographic mapping. Liquor license renewal applications for the Ketchikan Hospitality, Inc., DBA Annabelle's Famous Keg and Chatterhouse, and the Landing Restaurant, LLC, DBA The Landing Hotel Restaurant and Jeremiah's. Exempting procurement of the LRA 4G LTE software upgrades for the telecommunications division from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Erickson, Inc. Appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Stevenson. Exempting procurement of programming content for KPU TV from competitive bidding Visions Alaska II LLC. A budget transfer exempting the procurement of extrahop reveal network security system from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Zones LLC. A budget transfer exempting the procurement of XIA Visions 1 network security access system from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code CDW-G.
Oh, I missed that, can you say that again? I missed that. That's her big moment.
Please call the roll.
Kifer?
Sure.
Coos?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Thank you very much, brings us to unfinished business. Item 6, Resolution Number 192756, adopting the budget for the year 2020, appropriation from the General Government Fund for fiscal year 2020 deferred from December 11, 2019. And we do have some new updates. We have budget update number 11, fleet department parking ticket system, there's no action required there. We do have update budget item number 12, the current compensation increase, and that needs a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council members 2020 general government operating capital budget from the city clerk department by increasing its personnel services and benefit accounts to the amount of $6,220, as outlined in the finance department's report of December 12, 2019.
Then moved and seconded, any discussions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Kifer?
Yes.
That brings us to budget update number 13, expanding step in the wage table, there's no action required there, it was informational purposes, showed the amounts that would happen. And as you look at that, it was amazing how many people we have in that last step of the compensation plan that just sit there flatly.
And these are actual employees that-
That is correct. And then budget update number 14, appropriate reserve by fund summary, revision number two, and there's no action taken on that. Bring this up, budget update number 15, carryover 2019 capital projects. There's a motion required for that one.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council amend the 2020 general government operating capital budget by approving carrier over $866,968 of uncompleted capital projects programmed for 2019 to 2020, as outlined in the finance director's report due to December 17, 2019.
So does this in any way connect with item under new business, item two, the various general government departmental budget transfers? Are those separate items, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to direct your attention to the THM exterior envelope project HVAC base. Programmed expenditure of $455,000, or are we getting Mark up here?
Good evening, Public Works Director Mark Hilsen.
So we went on this project during the budget time, and so-
Right.
We're having a chance to think about that, that's $455,000, is that just for the exterior building upgrade, windows, and so airtight, and is that the mechanical system?
It's not the mechanical system. It's the windows, the doors, there's also some required insulation that our building envelope expert identified to preclude the potential for condensation inside the walls.
Condensation inside the walls from the windows, will it be in single pane?
Well, the windows are an issue too, so these are two separate types of projects.
Correct.
So inside the walls, inside like the mancered roof toward the top, that's one area.
So the purpose of this is to, is there any mold coming off inside the building?
No, we have no moisture issues currently.
So I wouldn't describe this as a critical job, then, if there's, you know, we don't have mold, we don't have to know you're in any outstanding- we don't have mold, we don't have familiar aid, any outstanding conditions?
We have old single pane windows, and when we go to update HVAC for the future, this is the first step.
Right. So, what's the, Bob, what's the funding source for this project?
Public Works sales tax.
So, Public Works sales tax, right. So, going through the budget this year is, it's a very professionally prepared document, so it's difficult to find projects or things to cut. You know, we've managed to add a lot of things to the budget this year. A person came up and indicated that we had, you know, added six FTEs in the fire department to police department. A lot of us at the table here concurred that a lot of that need was from our seasonal folks that coming in, the cruise ships and those kinds of things, and so I think we all can kind of agree on that. So, you know, I'm getting to a point here that, you know, we have to start looking to cut this budget somewhere, and I think that we have to find, you know, the least painful thing to do. You know, I can, you know, my house is 105 years old, I have single pane windows, I put storm windows on it, I did air sealing, I got myself a caulking gun, an infrared camera for my iPhone. You know, there's less expensive ways to do this. So, you know, I don't know if we're gonna have any buy-in from the council, but if we're looking to start kinda making some cuts other than personnel, I'd like to start cutting some projects, start cutting some fat and some things that we can put off. And then I'm thinking that this project is one of them. So, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bob.
No, I made a mistake if not being funded from the Public Works Sales Tax Fund, if funded from the Community Facilities Development Fund.
So, that's a very specific fund. What's, what is the source for it? Where does the funds come from?
The fund came from a variety of different sources, but it's all one-time-only funds. For example, we got a refund from our herd contribution, almost $900,000, and that was going to that fund at the direction of the city council. So, there's a number, number of different sources. I'd ask for, I think, and we'll see what all of them are.
So, if we were to defer this project, then all we'd be doing, we couldn't use this money anywhere else? We couldn't like fund positions, fund pay increases?
Well, this is one of those funds that the city council established, so it's really up to the council how they wanna spend the money from that particular fund. At the time, we started receiving these funds, the council designated all of these funds for the library, the fire station, and the museum, and that's what we can use it for.
I appreciate that. So, getting into the discussion about tonight's budget in general, I've had a chance to look at a document that all of us were handed out a while ago, and it's the Ketchikan Comprehensive Housing Assessment Study. So, it's the housing study for the city of Ketchikan and Borough of Ketchikan. So, if I can have a few minutes here, I'd like to go over this-
Go ahead.
Some of the demographics and some of the highlights out of this document, and for some of the reasoning and rationale that I'm bringing this up. So, the demographics are, so Ketchikan's population has been stable in recent years, about 13,800 people. The only published forecast is for the borough's population compared by the state demographer. So, they're anticipating that the population will decline slowly, borough, the city and borough, by the year 2035 to 600 residents. So, they're, and then the Ketchikan's population- Sorry, by 600? By 600. You said 260.
We're all gonna die.
Just wanna make sure we're getting accurate.
Yeah.
Just checking. Hey, I got before your due. Okay, since in 2035, we're supposed to, they're anticipating that we're gonna be 600 fewer people living in the borough and in the city. The other thing that's interesting is the Ketchikan's population over 60 years of age increased 55% over the past 10 years, substantially more than any other cohort, a trend that is not unique to Ketchikan. The over 60 population is the only cohort expected to grow in the near term according to the state's forecast. 10 years ago, residents over age 60 accounted for 16% of the borough's population. In 2017, it was 22%, and by 2035, it'll be 28%. So, we were losing people, our population is aging. Our ability to fund all of the things that we like to do are, you know, getting harder and harder. The state demographer's population forecast for Ketchikan suggests a slow decline over the next 15 years. However, that forecast does not consider the foreseeable economic growth that's associated with the visitor industry. So, in the very near term, I wanted to talk about one other thing, and that is federal and state and local employment. From the year 2009 to the year 2017, the federal employment in Ketchikan has dropped by 18%. The state in 2017, and it's only got worse since 2017, has dropped by 13%. And we're talking about maybe losing ferry jobs and that trend to continue. So, I wanted to read these things that are going out on the studies that we paid for on information that's provided for us. And the thing that, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is before council member Williams got off the council due to his condition or his illness, was is that he felt, as did I, that because we have open positions that we should fund for this year, the increased, the wage increases out of reserves. And if you look at our general fund reserve today, we have $3,951,767. As an add-on to that, I wanted to say that we have talked about getting together and as, you know, having a workshop or a work session or a retreat. I think it's time that we really take these statistics to heart, and we take a look at our spending to heart, and we see, we start talking about the future, our built-in pay increases and our costs year in, year out, what we can afford, what we anticipate our demographics to be. So, we all talk about kicking the can down the road. I think that it's time to really start taking a hard look at what we're doing. And so, one of the motions that I'm going to make is to take that weatherization project from the, from the museum and put it back in the general fund and, you know, fund the rest of the pay increases out of reserves. Year in and year out, we take a budget, we base our fees and our taxes on that budget, and we fail most years to spend that much, and so we take that money and we put it into reserves. I don't think this budget is unlike any other, you know, it's not different than most others. But the other good news that we got today was is that Norwegian Cruise Line is gonna be tying up downtown, so, you know, that should help our sales tax and some other revenues that we were anticipating to see dogage warpage fees. I think that's good news.
Commissioner Bergeron, I'm sorry to interrupt, I have to correct, that information is not correct.
Okay.
We're inquiring of Norwegian of what their current position is, we've received no response.
No, I thought, I thought I was talking over with Bob that we were doing that. Okay, well, even if that's not, even if that's not happening, I still think that we need to take these monies out of reserves. I think we need to have the work session, and we need to start talking about these demographics, and we need to do the right thing. The young man that came up here today has got many years of paying property tax ahead of him, many tax increases, many assessment increases to go on top of what we're building on to. So, you know, it's time to start making some hard decisions. And I think this year in the work session, when we go through the budget, I really gotta start taking a look at this stuff. You know, we talk about, you know, all of the big decisions that we have this year, and I think among them, this is one of them, this is a problem that we've got coming up, it's not sustainable, we can't continue to do this. And so, I offer a motion that, first of all, that we take the- We have a motion in force.
Yes, we have a motion in force, so it needs to be amended.
Yes. So, I have amended the motion that we take the $455,000 out for the exterior museum envelope project phase one, stick it back in the general fund.
Is there a second?
We'll have a question first, Your Honor.
We're still waiting to see if there's a second.
Right. You say it?
No. No second?
I'll second for discussion.
You'll second for discussion. All right.
Would the $455,000 be going back, or wouldn't it only be the $84,000 that's in the carrier program? So, we have $455,000, I have, four. Yeah, so the 80, you're right. It would be 85, 85 grand, not 455. You're correct.
This doesn't match the budget. This is totally different.
I think, can you explain this, Bob?
My question is, if there was $455,000 in the 2019 budget, not the 2020 budget-
You're right.
Did we spend, I don't know what we spent, but we're trying to carry $84,000 over, and we've got, oh, what is it up here? $710,000 in that, in the 2020 budget for the project. So, I don't know what kinda money we're moving around and where we're moving to, and what's spent and what's not spent, what's got done and what hadn't got done.
I'll try to explain it. So, see, when the council adopted the budget in 2019, they established a $455,000 project budget. The Public Works Department would estimate how much they spent for that $455,000, and they estimated $124,000 would be either spent or encumbered by the end of 2019. So, the difference between the $455,000 and the $124,000 is going to go back into the reserve of Fund 330, which is the Community Facilities Development Fund. Public Works had since come back and said, we can't get the $124,000, can't are encumbered by the end of 2019. We would like to carry, we'd like to revise our estimate down to $39,600 and carry $84,000 over into 2020. But the bottom line is $370,000 of that $455,000 is going back into reserve.
Hey, now, I wanna follow up, Bob. We've got $710,000 showing up in the budget.
I don't know where you're getting this from.
I'm getting it off of page H1 of the budget.
Page one of the budget, I detected.
So, that means we've got, we've got it planned for right there, so why are we sticking another $84,000 on, on top of it?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
H1, under the capital budget.
They're asking for new funding in addition to what they are planning on carrying over, but they're not gonna carry that full amount over this year. It needs to be revised well, based on what they're doing right here tonight, but that number's going to change.
Why, that $710,000, what's said needed to do the job?
Well, if you look at the prior year column, it shows $124,020, that's the estimate that shows up on the schedule. And so, they intended to reappropriate the $370,000 that was left over. I didn't realize that they had reappropriated the money. It either go, it's either being reappropriated or it goes back into reserve. So, what they've done is they decided that they need to reappropriate more than $330,000, and they're adding another $84,000 to the $330,000, and then they're asking, you're right, additional funding for $379,000 for this project. So, that'll bring the total project cost up to $794,000, $794,000 if the council approved this motion tonight. Like, the point is, it is an ongoing project, they're not done with it, they're going into the next phase of what needs to be done in order to accomplish this project.
Okay, I've got another question, and it's on-
Go ahead, Dick.
...the document. Top of the page we're working on tonight is replace two marked police vehicles. $95,000, we spent $89,777. We want it, I'm assuming they have been purchased, so why are we carrying over $5,520? Is there still something to do on those vehicles? Or is the project completed?
Yeah, my guess is what's happening here is when the fleet department buys a vehicle, if not fully equipped, so there may be some sirens that need to be put on, or there may need to be some striping to identify the power to these vehicles.
Joe's right there.
We had the better. Joe, I need a place, all that, and shipping from Anchorage down.
Okay, so it's not gonna happen until next year?
The vehicles have been delivered to Anchorage, and we're awaiting outfitting and shipment out, yes.
So, the project isn't complete yet?
Correct.
It hasn't been delivered.
Okay, I'm gonna go on down to the next one. The operating wall replacement on the civic center. We're carrying $36,000 over. Is that project complete or not complete? We just need an explanation of these numbers so we know what we're doing. Are they done or not done?
Alice, Mark, you're on.
So, I could say the-
Oh, Mark Hilson, Public Works Director, I could say the operable wall project is substantially complete. That may reflect the final payment due to the contractor, or it might reflect the contingency established when we did the award. So, the project isn't finally closed out yet, but all the work is done, so.
You mean the payments aren't closed out?
Yeah, the last payment might not be closed out, and we haven't done our, our final acceptance. We did our substantial completion, so.
So, this particular project, we are not asking to any new funding for 2020. It just turns out that the estimate for $283,000 is too high, and the Civic Center would like to transfer $36,165,000 of that estimate into 2020 so they can finish the project. But we're not asking for any additional funding in 2020. But a little bit different than the museum project you were talking about.
Yeah, except we still aren't clear on whether it's been done or not done, and that's, that's the confusion part. Public, go down the next line item, utility truck replacement. Doesn't look like we got it done in 2019, so we're carrying the whole amount over.
That's correct.
Is it in the budget already for 2020?
No, no. No, what we're asking is, we thought we were gonna be able to encumber the fund, identify a vendor and encumber the fund in 2019. We're not able to do that, so now we're asking that the fund be carried over into 2020.
After 12 months, we couldn't get it done? Come on, guys. I'm not, the next one, I understand what the finisher rock is, but I'm done.
Sam?
Thanks.
So, Bob, how much do we have appropriated for 2019 on the museum project with 84, 420 plus whatever else that we have appropriated?
$790 something.
So, that's-
For the year, for the whole?
For the whole year, yeah. That includes the $84,000, and that will be, if the council approves it, that will be carried over into 2020. And most of that will be funded from the Community Facilities Development Fund.
Which is funded from, through the general fund?
No, it's not through the general fund at all.
So, where's the fund at from?
That's what I was explaining earlier, it came from a number of different sources, including that $900,000 per contribution repayment we got back from the state several years ago. There's some other dollars in there that I can't remember where they came from, but I'd be happy to-
So, so the first contribution was actually an employee cost, what it costs for our employees, what we paid for retirement?
That's correct, yeah. And as it turns out, the city continued to pay the contribution rate at 22%, although we had an option to pay a lesser amount, and the reason for that occurred to be, we had a significant unfunded pension liability. The state came back and said, for all those municipal authorities that pay 22%, we're gonna give you the funds back because we've decided we don't, we don't need those funds anymore. And so, when we got the money back, we, in before the council, and said, where would you like us to put the money? And they said, please, put it in the Community Facilities Development Fund, and that's what we get.
So, if we killed this project, then all it would do would mean that, well, the exterior envelope project on the museum would go away, we funded it in a different- That we could put back into the general fund?
Not the general fund, the Community Facility Development Fund.
Right, we can take it out of the community's fund, put it back in the general fund because we originally spent that money for labor burden, for retirement, as part of the cost of our employees.
Well, actually it's just part of the general fund, the KPU also contributed well. Because some of their employees are covered under the first plan.
Okay.
Carl.
I'd just make a quick observation. I clearly understand the, the intent of the motion, but I think you got to look 12 months from now. 12 months from now, we're still going to need to do the building envelope at the museum, but the $800,000, whatever the number is, is no longer available because the council will channel it into the general fund to, to offset the need for, uh, an adjustment to the tax levy. We deferred the implementation of the comp plan last year using Councilmember Williams' rationale. I understand the rationale for wanting to defer it this year, but we're also going to be back in negotiations with IBEW. You know they're going to be asking for cost of living adjustments that aren't factored into these numbers. All I'm saying is, you're free to do this, but I think you're digging yourself a hole when you start looking at the 2021 budget. Because the needs for the museum will still exist, we haven't, will not have raised taxes to do what's necessary to fund the comp plan. And then above and beyond that, you have an unknown cost of living adjustment that all your unions are going to be seeking for 2021. So I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Councilmember Flora.
I agree, pardon me, I agree with a lot with some of the things Councilmember Bergeron's saying, particularly the need, and I brought this up the last couple of budget cycles, for getting on this earlier in the year because making these adjustments at the end of the budget cycle are always more difficult now than if we were talking about this in March, April, May and had the opportunity to maybe identify some of these savings, pardon me, and allow the pardon heads to be able to program that into their essential needs versus wants. Pardon me. Before the last meeting, I'd asked the finance director, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that if we were to defer the property tax increase and fund the comp plan, the added fire personnel and the added police personnel, I believe it's, uh, it would be digging into reserves into the, about 1.65 million. And this is, if you want to see this to me, this is two weeks old, so I don't know if this, let's see if, if that's, am I on the right track there as far as dollar figures?
Your number here, you have to remember that comp plan is being funded from different funding sources. So, yes, it could be 1.6 million, I don't, I don't remember. I don't think it's that much. And, and the reason being there is when we calculated the original cost, citywide it was 1.2, I'm going off memory here, about 1.67 million dollars between KPU and general government. But that particular analysis assumed that, um, we were, picture journeyman positions offered to journeymen, raise and pay them on a, a different pay schedule. That did not happen. The actual cost to implement the compensation plan is a different number. I didn't provide those numbers, sorry, I can't tell you what it is. I know the general fund portion, um, is 802,000 and I think general government portion is about 850,000.
Well, that was my email, actually the numbers from you. That was your response to my question for the comp plan, police and fire. I'm just trying to come up with a dollar figure for consideration to your amendment is, what, after we look at these projects, if we do them or not, what is the number that we would be digging into reserves if we decide to do this? I think that's, is that kind of where we're headed?
Okay, well, that question there, you've got a $830,000 deficit in the general fund right now. So if you want to erase that deficit, then you would need to, that cost $830,000 to transfer money from some other fund into the general fund to provide for that, that's differential.
Plus the police and fire?
Uh, police and fire, totally different. Police and fire has already been addressed at the, at the last council meeting and will be in CPB funds.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'd rather kill a project that's not, you know, that, that there's no critical need at the museum to do that project. That's a want and say, we're trying to fund people here, so, you know, you guys, we're the only people here that have the oversight over this budget and over the government. And, you know, people can see, you know, well, that's, you know, that's not a critical thing, you know, there's no mold, you know, there's, there's not water pouring in, there's, you know, things aren't being, it's a want. So I, I want employees and I want to compensate them, but I don't want to raise taxes to do it. So I think the thing to do is, is to take a project that's not critical, take it out of the budget, pair people with it. That's what this is about. So that's the budget, that's, that's the motion and that's the intent. That's all I got.
Kelly.
Did we, in the budget, do we have the, um, old case kitchen put in there for that project? Or is that just something we have to approve of? The removing the building and turning that into a parking lot? That's 300,000? That's not part of it?
No, that, that would have to be addressed by the council separately.
Because that's all, that's all want, not a need. I mean, unless you want to keep that parking.
That's coming up later.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like to thank everybody for their, their comments and the feelings they have in regards to this. We have a lot of facilities that, that we're going to have to continue to maintain and I wouldn't want to do anything, I think, in, uh, in regards to, uh, you know, not taking care of our infrastructure. Sam's right, this probably, because there's no mold or something, may not be, uh, critical in that manner, but when we decided to keep the Centennial Building, it was with the understanding that it was going to need upgrades. And it's not the, the windows or stuff, uh, particular, but we have artifacts in that building that have to maintain a long-term life. Uh, and that is in regards to moisture content and temperature. Um, all museums have some kind of a, a heat exchanger to try to keep the temperatures in a, in a range, and the humidity in a range that will, uh, make sure that those artifacts, um, don't get damaged or deteriorate, uh, quickly. So this is, we started down this road, we did, you know, electrical systems, we did remodeling, we changed the floor plans, we put a membrane rough on it. These are all steps in getting to that building to where, uh, past councils thought it should go. And every council has the opportunity to change directions, I get that. But I think it's important that we continue to move forward with these projects. When you start putting holes in them, all they do is back up on you. And then, because we don't know what's going to break next week or the week after or next year. Uh, we have the opportunity, we have funding available, um, there has been a plan ongoing, we've been in contact with contractors. Our public works director has worked with the Alaska Museum to see what they had in regards to air handlers and moisture contents. Um, and so I think they have a plan moving forward, so I, I think it's appropriate. Um, yeah, you could probably take it out of there, but it's going to come back more expensive and bite you later. That's just the way I see these kind of, if you don't take care of your tires, pretty soon something else is broken on the car or, or on your house, you know, if you don't do something to it. So I, but I appreciate what Sam's saying, I think it's important that we continue to look at this, but Mark had it right, we got to make this decision earlier rather than later.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Me. I think too, one of the things that, I don't know, I know that since we reopened, um, tourism has grown and, uh, what they're making, or, you know, what the payments are for people who go into the museum seem to be doing pretty good with the Heritage Center and the other. But I'm sure at some point that'll be, um, a benefit to keeping the building and the artifacts up too. But I agree, I think we, I, I don't want to see things destroyed because we didn't keep, get in that building where it needs to be. That, that building's just...
So we have an amendment on the floor. Will you read it back to us? It was to...
Take, uh, the 84, carryover of 84,420 out of the...
Is that correct?
I know we talked about the whole project, but...
Yeah, that's what the motion was.
The motion was made, just to carry over.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Flora?
No.
Kuz?
No.
Kifer?
No.
Gage?
No.
Bergeron?
Doesn't matter.
It does, man. Yes.
So the amendment fails, we'll vote on the main motion.
We vote.
By Councilmember Flora, seconded by Councilmember Kuz. And the main motion was budget update number 15.
Correct. And it was to approve the carryovers, uh, of the uncompleted capital projects. Any questions?
I don't have a question, Bob, but I just, I apologize, but I tried to make a point. If stuff's not clear, it needs to come back to a clear.
With a little bit of an explanation, yeah.
With a little bit of an explanation. A couple of, I'm not, I'd carry over for that, of course.
And, and I appreciate that. And one of the questions I had is, why didn't we get the utility truck? I mean, a lot of times if we have, and I hope that it's the way it works, but when we put in a large item like that, I think it's because we have a need. And then if it doesn't get purchased in that year, there seemed to be a disconnect in regards to need and funding of that particular item. Uh, maybe they didn't need it because they didn't purchase it. And I don't, and I don't know why, I guess.
I could, uh, speak somewhat to that. We got very close to purchasing it. Uh, there was another vehicle that we did purchase in wastewater, um, and we had just a lot of competing priorities that took time. So we're very close to making the purchase, uh, just didn't happen this year.
Okay, and I guess my question is, when do we start on these projects? If we're doing vehicle purchases, we should, I'm assuming that we need them, so.
Right, yeah, absolutely, we do need them. Um, and we try to juggle, you know, all the vehicle purchases that, that we do. So, um, sometimes we have, uh, some complexities there when you're dealing with, uh, lift hoists or cranes, you know, that are attached to these and truck bodies coming from different places that are custom than the truck itself. So sometimes they drag on a little bit and as was the case with this one.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
You've heard the motion, uh, any other comments? Hearing and hearing none, please call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, very much. Also, uh, that was item 15, which with the carryover, we have, uh, budget update number 16, um, which was speaking to the resolution number 2756. Um, and that's, uh, some of it reflects the amendments, uh, as we've done them. And then there's, uh, also a budget update number 17, KBB additional information, which is no action required. So that brings us on to the, uh, main resolution, item 1, uh, 192756, adopting the budget for the year 2020 appropriation from the general fund, uh, for physical years 2020. That was deferred from December 11th, 2019. The motion is on the floor in regards to adopting the budget. Is that correct, or do we have an update?
No. I have one question.
Yes.
So, um, during the budget meetings, we had a conversation regarding the, um, um, visitors bureau wanting an additional 20,000, is that in the, the budget update that we're going to be voting on?
No, the council has made no direction to make that adjustment.
I was trying to make sure.
All right. So there's a rundown there in regards to, uh, the budget. We deliberated, deliberated, yeah, we did that and, um, discussed and moved through the items, discussed with the department. Is there any other comment before we make the vote? Dick.
Yeah, Your Honor, I didn't realize that the, uh, request by the KBB was not in the budget, so I'm going to make a motion to, uh, raise their budget by whatever they requested was 20 grand. I think they probably justified it, they do, do good work for it, we've got not a real good attorney. I know there's some questions, but they're out there chucking for us and, uh, we need somebody to do that. So I'm, I move that we, uh, upgrade that budget by $20,000.
That's what the 6% represented?
Just fully fund them?
Yeah, fully fund them, is it correct? Is there a second?
No.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? The motion's on the floor to amend the budget to allow for the increase as associated to the KBB. Any more discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll on the amendment.
Gage?
No.
Bergeron?
No.
Flora?
No.
Kuz?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
That motion fails three to two. Back to the main motion, which is resolution number 192756. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passed, it's four to one. Want to take a timeout? We can take a short five minute here. Thank you, we'll come back to order, that brings us down to item 6B1, resolution number 192757, adopting the budget for the year 2020 appropriation from the Ketchikan Public Utilities Enterprise Fund for the physical year, physical year, deferred from December 11th, 2019. We have two, uh, budget updates, budget update number six, amends electric division 2020 24 capital improvement program and there's action required, so do we have a motion on item six?
Your Honor, I move the city council amend the 2020 Ketchikan Public Utilities operating capital budget to add the warehouse roof repair and replacement capital project in the amount of $170,000 and reduce funding for six capital projects, including the electric apartments budget by a total of $170,000. As outlined, the finance director's in the end of December 17th, 2019.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Dave?
That's what Sam was talking about.
I can get behind this.
Yeah, we got leaky roof.
Any, any questions in regards to, um, budget update number six for the utilities? Pretty self-explanatory. Seeing and hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
That brings us to budget update number seven, it's a revised resolution 192757, there's no action required, but it, uh, reflects the amendments to the KPU budget as they exist today.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Before we get into the KPU budget, oh, there's no rating basis for electrical this year, is there?
We're implementing the three and a half percent, the electric...
We're implementing the 3.5% electric rate increase that was deferred from last year effective January 1.
Right, but not the CFA increase, that's not going to be right.
No, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no other budget updates, that brings us back to the original motion in regards to the electrical budget. Any other comments, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Bergeron?
Aye.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This brings us down to item seven, new business, general government A1, budget transfer exempt into procurement of the Ford F-550 Super Duty 4x4 Mini Pumper and associated equipment from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code Hughes Fire Equipment. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Pursuant to subparagraph nine of section 31205A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city exempt the procurement of a Ford F-550 Super Duty 4x4 Mini Pumper and associated equipment from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, authorize the purchase of such vehicle from Hughes Fire Equipment at a cost of $288,680 under Houston Galveston Area Council GHAC contract number FS12 hyphen 17. Approve a budget transfer of $10,508 from the fire department's 2019 vehicle 52-752 refurbishment replacement capital account to the vehicle 52-756T3 replacement capital account, and direct the city manager to execute contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mark?
I'm exhausted just from reading it. Nothing, Your Honor. Someone, someone...
What's that?
The reducing...
Chief, yeah, come on up, chief. You want to know a little bit about this project?
Well, I read some of the memorandum, and it says when it's advantageous, so why are we not going out to bid for this one?
Chief Hope, Fire Department. So just like we did with the ladder truck, this is a pre-bid government contract. Houston Galveston Area Council does these bids on a regular basis. They get competitive bid prices, and rather than having to rebid them on our own, we're just taking advantage of using a contract that's already gone through the same process we would use.
Good work. All right.
Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes. Bring us to 782, various general government departmental budget transfers. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Remove the city council authorize the city manager to transfer $276,290 from various accounts, including $35,040 to the appropriated reserves of the general fund, $12,900 from the appropriated reserves of the harbor fund, and $35,850 from appropriated reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund to various accounts as outlined in the finance director's report of December 9, 2019. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Dave, do you have anything?
No, it's various, but it's, I'm sure it's worth, the memo will reveal all.
It does. Any other questions from the council?
So basically, it's anticipated overtime costs, unanticipated interdepartmental garage charges, unanticipated machinery equipment, unanticipated overtime costs for police operations, dispatch, and unanticipated moving allowance costs for library children's services, and various other... Unanticipated costs.
Yeah, correct.
We need to do a better job of anticipating costs.
Thank you, thank you for reading, no damage. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to 783, directing regarding the potential purchase of real property located at 2813 Tongas Avenue, former Bar Harbor Restaurant.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Move the city council direct city manager to take such action regarding the purchase of 2813 Tongas Avenue, former Bar Harbor Restaurant for expansion of the adjacent parking lot as determined appropriate by the city council.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mark?
Your Honor, this came up at the Port and Harbors Advisory Board, and it was requested that this come to the council for consideration, and we have a little background data, we have an appraisal that's been done on the building. So it's like we need to have a discussion as to whether this is the right thing for the city for some future parking needs.
Anybody have any comments? Yes, Dick?
Yeah, I, I think that we need to go ahead and give direction to staff to negotiate with this gentleman that owns this, based upon the fact that it's only worth $300,000. If we can come to an agreement that we might be agreeable to, but it's a valuable piece of property, and it's not going to be there forever. To me, it's something that the harbor needs from the standpoint of parking and actually improvement of that one access point there, so we may never get another opportunity.
Mark?
I agree with Councilmember Kuz's premise when looking through the appraisal. The underlying land value is $250,000. The city has no use for the structure. I believe, if I recall right, public works director said you folks could actually get rid of the building if, if the sale were to happen.
Yeah, Public Works Director Mark Hilsen, yes, if the city council reached agreement and purchased the building, the first step would be to abate, there's some asbestos in it, limited amount, not a whole lot. That would be the first step, then yes, we could, we could tear it down in-house forces.
Was that about $14,000?
It was.
To do that?
Correct.
So I guess for council consideration is, there's a building that the gentleman wants to sell, don't get me wrong, but has no value to the city. There's a, there's a cost of $14,000 or so to get rid of it. So where would we want to be at as far as a purchase price to consider for this purchase? And where would that money come from? Those seem to be the two relevant questions.
So Carl, there was a plan that part of this comes out of the Port and Harvard and part of it, out of the harbors, and that part of it comes out of public works?
The initial acquisition price, we proposed it would come from the harbors. Demolition would be done by public works as a general government expense. That's how it was originally proposed.
Okay. And, and I, sometimes you, it's whatever the market can bear in regards to how we purchase properties and stuff. And they're not making any more real estate around our harbor, so if we can increase the number of spaces as they anticipate here, I think that's a good thing because our harbors are well-used in the community, and there's a real limited amount of parking. The problem that we really have is the fact that that ramp that we utilize is deteriorating. We're doing some work on it that it exists today. We have service trucks that back down that and cars that go down that. We have no walkways. People are walking right in the direct path of traffic. And it's all a wood surface that continues to need maintenance. And I think there's already a proposal that we have to do some ramp work and different things there for the ADA environment. So I think we just move forward, give Carl direction to negotiate probably the best deal he can get out of it, and then get a purchase so we can get, move on with that particular project. And take the funding from the appropriated sources as he spoke.
Can we use the rock from the pedestal?
That's already accounted for, I believe, so. That was part of the projecting disposal, and not knowing exactly the characteristics of that rock when it comes out of there, it may not be a bad thing. So you'll bring us back all the appropriate information in regards to when it... Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, please call the roll. The motion is, we gave him direction to go and negotiate with the guy and get it purchased.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, that's all you can do. We can't set really a price here.
We can just put no objections or whatever, so we don't really have to do a roll call.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, so four hands. He's got directions.
No objections.
You're okay with that, Carl?
It was three.
All right.
I only saw three.
You only saw three?
Yeah.
Okay.
You raised three, that counts.
Okay, how many hands do we have to move forward with this particular project? There's three.
So we need four?
We need four to make a...
So do you want to do a roll call vote, then?
Yeah, do a roll call vote.
Gage?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Kuz?
Yep.
Motion fails. No, what's it do?
It's three to two.
So it passes?
It passes, three to two.
No, it doesn't pass.
We need to have four.
We have four. We have four. We're not a five-member council.
Not a five, it's not. So, okay.
Let's bring it back next week. We want to bring it back when Judy's here.
Okay.
Yeah, bring it back.
Bring it back. We'll bring it back when we have a full council. Thank you. So that brings us on to item 784. It's award of contract number 19-42, Public Defender Service, Leif Thompson Law Office.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council authority of contract number 1942, agreement for public defender services between the City of Ketchikan and Leif Thompson Law Office, authorize funding in the annual amount of $20,000 from the Law Department's 2020 legal and accounting services account, account number 640 dot 01, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Dick?
Is this the normal annual contract we do?
It will, it will be. The former public defender gave us a notice that he was moving on, so we bid a new contract.
So we had a contract with somebody prior to this?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I get in the pokey, this is the guy I called, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no. You can afford...
Oh, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Brings us to 785, budget transfer contract number 19-41, berth three fender replacement, Western Dock and Bridget. Do I have a motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council accept a bid of Western Dock and Bridge in the amount of $1,108,000 for contract number 1941, berth three fender replacement, establish 5% contingency in the amount of $55,000, bringing the total project cost to $1,163,000. Authorize a $658,000 budget transfer from the corporate reserves, appropriated reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund to the berth three fender replacement capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city council.
Same.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, Dick?
Something we need to get fixed.
Do we have to send this out?
What's that?
We're not sending it out, though.
Send it, please, yes.
Can I ask Mr. Corpran about the question? Before we get started, Steve Nice Hat?
Thank you, sir.
So what happened to our fenders?
Port and Harbors Director Steve Corpran. The original arch fenders, there's four on each of the piles for the reaction dolphins on the, on the barge.
For those of us who aren't real smart, what's a reaction dolphin?
It's, it's the dolphin that holds, there are two dolphins that hold the barge in place, as opposed to the mooring dolphins, which are the ones that are strung out north at a dolphin, where the mooring lines and that go to. And so there's three large pile on the north end and three large pile on the south corner. And they each have four arch fenders, which are kind of an industry standard up until, till now. The original ones lasted about five years, and they slowly were getting deteriorated. We were having issues on normal ships. If they didn't tend their lines properly on a rising tide, the barge would get pushed over, and the, the arch fenders on the, the inside of the piles would get basically squashed, and then on the rising tide, they would rip. As the ships have gotten larger, there's been three issues. One, the deadweight tonnage is a lot more. Two, the shape of the ships have actually changed over the years. They're more like a football now, more than a, than a truck. They're, yeah, there's hardly any flat going down the side of the ship anymore. They're, they're very rounded. So a lot of, even the big ships, do not catch either the hard dock at three or the first mooring dolphin at three. So they're basically, the only thing really touching the side many times is the fenders alongside the barge. So the barge is getting pushed over, you know, at a more severe rate. And the length of the ships now is the third thing, with the bliss and the joy, that that berth was designed for 1,000-foot ships, and they're almost 1,100-foot. So we've got eight mooring lines going to that last dolphin, to three quick-release pelicans that are designed for one line each. So one of those has two, and two of those have three each when they're tied up. And I've been on board with the captains. Even when they slack to 20% on all, eight of those lines, that's still a lot of force pulling on that last dolphin. So not only is the barge getting pushed, or the ship pushing the barge into the reaction dolphins, from the channel side, it's also twisting the barge and pushing it from the north to the south. So now it's ripping the ones on the north side as well as the channel side there. What's been implemented in Juno with their new, two new barges up there, it's, there's six fenders instead of four on each reaction dolphin. And instead of an arch fender that's mounted horizontally, it has a very large opening which allows cushion, but it also allows it to crush on these heavy loads, they've gone to a vertical block fender with only a small opening through it, and it runs vertically, and there's six of them instead of four. So it spreads the load out, makes it much more resistant to shear in the vertical direction. And it's a lot less compressive.
We're changing the design, we're not just changing the, the donut.
Correct. And to handle these, the, the big box steel frames that hold these fenders have to be cut off, and new ones fabricated down south and put in. The original, the original back-of-the-envelope estimate, when I asked PND, who designed the barge here and also designed the new stuff up in Juno, I said, I want to get this project in, we've got to get it in before the budget, because we don't have time to wait until January to go out for bids and that kind of stuff. They said about, about a half million was their best, just quick guess. So that's what we threw in front of you guys several months ago, so we could get this thing under design and get it going. Once they got it designed and then took the actual steel dimensions and widths required for these frames for the fenders, the weight of each one of the frames went from about 55,000 pounds for what's there to about 80,000 pounds. And with the price of steel that's gone up in the last two years, they, about three, four weeks ago, they redid their estimate based on the design, and it came out to 994, and all, and just under 1.1 if you threw a contingency in there. And that ended up being the number. They hit it right on the head once they got, you know, got a good, accurate number. So, and we're just barely going to get these installed in time with the lead time on fabrication and the lead time on the fenders, which have to come from overseas. It was bid by Western and Cool. They both got, in talking with the contractors, they both got their quotes from the same three fabricators down south. Right before bids were due, two of them withdrew from both of them. The winning bidder, I think, went with the original price. I suspect the number two couched his a little bit in case he had to throw more money to the fabricator to really speed him up. And that was somewhat...
There was quite a price spread there.
Yeah, and it was, well, and it was indirectly confirmed because when the Western went back to the, the only fabricator that stayed in the game, the next day... only fabricator that stayed in the game, the next day, they tried to withdraw as well. Yeah, he came in my office, it was a very uncomfortable conversation we had for a little bit there, but I told him, "Just go back to him." And they've used them quite a bit in the past, and so I was confident that he could talk them into it, and things got calmed down, and we're back on track for barely making it in time. So I'm glad we started this. If we'd waited for the budget, it wouldn't have made it.
So, do you think this is going to fix the problem, Steve? Has this been tried out?
This is the worst part that we need to fix now. If we're going to continue to put ships over 1,000 feet there, we really need to add another mooring dolphin to the north.
How much is that going to cost?
Preliminary estimate's about $2.5 million. I think that might be a little light. So when I was starting to put the budget together, we didn't put it in there, because we were waiting for the RFP stuff to come through. I'm probably going to recommend maybe $3.5, you know, when it gets to that. Plus, we'll see what the price of steel does in the next 12 months as well.
It's going to go down like everything else?
And the other thing we need to do, we probably need another double-bit bollard to the south here, right at the end of, north end of two, south end of three. That's what PND's report, I can't remember if I put, no, I didn't put it in here, but it's in the RFP package, you know, to let other proposers know.
So that bollard goes, when you put a new one of those things in, it goes all the way to the ground and it's tied back, right?
On the double-bit bollard?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that won't be much compared to the mooring dolphin.
So it's not like going and nailing a cleat on the dock, so there's a lot more involved with it?
No, especially with the hollow core panels, it takes a lot of bolts to spread out that load when you're going through some of the concrete here on the dock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey?
I don't want to extend this conversation too far, but so it sounds like there's a real tight time for the business in place, and it sounds like there's some issues out there. If it doesn't happen, can we make it through the summer without the replacements? All we're going to need is one Murphy's law thing to happen somewhere.
I understand. You know, I've had these discussions myself at night, it's one of the things I do sleep over sometimes, so.
I'm sorry.
The arch fenders on the backside are brand-new, and we have in the past swapped some of those out, you know, taken some of the torn ones off and put the ones on the backside, on the front side. We could probably do that again if we had to, because if we wanted to order more arch fenders, that's usually about a six-month lead time. So if something happens, we won't get it, it's not like, oh, we'll just throw some more new arch fenders on there. Because of what happened, like with the Elysian with the Infinity, three years ago now, you do need protection on the backside as well, so you don't damage the steel structure if something like that happens. And we were safe there, you know, there was no damage to the steel on the piles. The pile caps are what tore, which was like the designed weak spot, because that's a lot cheaper to fix than if we would have had to do some of the in-water pile work. But if we hadn't had that backside protection, we could have very well had pile damage, which would not have been cheap or quick to fix like the pile caps were, which was only a million-dollar fix in three weeks, so.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
What was the question? You mentioned additional dolphins to the north, so at what point do we not have access to city flow?
That is a discussion that has to be made in conjunction with the berth four negotiations, because if we do that, then you're kind of limiting the length of ship you can put on four.
A future discussion, I look forward to it.
And we've had those, not just me in my head at night, but we've had those in talking with crews on agency, as we do our annual, trying to fail all the ships here and there, you know.
Why is that fabrication people backing out?
Because they have a ton of work down there, and this is a tiny little project that's not going to have the big profit margin as the big projects they're working on right now.
Okay, so it's not that they're unstable?
No, it's because they can make a lot more money on the big jobs down there they're already working on.
All right, any other questions? Thanks for the explanation, Steve.
Yeah, sorry, I was probably more than you needed to hear.
That's perfect, it was right on money, I like it.
I'll tell you on fenders.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll watch it all from my house, Steve.
Any other questions?
You're the captain and you're the captain's...
Please call the roll.
Kifer?
Sure.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
That motion, that just brings us to 7A6 Budget Transfer Amendment Number One to Contract Number 1935 Design of Birth Three Fender Replacement, PND Engineering, Inc. motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approved amendment number one in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for contract number 1935 Design of Birth Three Fender Replacement between the City and the PND Engineers, Inc., in bringing the total contract amount to $35,000. Authorize a budget transfer of $15,000 from the appropriated reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund to the Birth Three Fender Replacement Capital Account, and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the City Council.
Seconded. Moving and seconded, discussion? I think we've been there, so. Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that brings us to 7B2 Budget Transfer Approved Letter Engagement Regarding Negotiations of a Compliance Order by Consent for Water Filtration from the Alaskan Department of Environmental Conservation, Perkins Coie.
Your Honor, I move the City Council approved order of engagement from the City of Ketchikan Doing Business as Ketchikan Public Utilities and Perkins Coie Regarding Negotiations of a Compliance Order by Consent for Water Filtration with the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. Authorize a budget transfer of $5,000 from the appropriated reserves of the KPU Enterprise Fund to the Water Division's Water Filtration Facility Capital Account, and direct the city manager to execute the engagement letter on behalf of the City Council.
Seconded. Moving and seconded. Any questions? Carl? Any comments?
Just after the council authorized us to begin discussions with ADEC, I had a conversation with the city attorney, and he recommended that perhaps it might be better if we brought in outside counsel to represent us relative to the negotiations that are going to have to take place with ADEC.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Thank you very much, brings us 7B3 Professional Service Agreement, Contract Number 1945 Showen Bar Road Raw Water Transmission Main Design Dow.
Your Honor?
Yes. The City Council authorized Professional Services Agreement for Contract Number 1945 Showen Bar Road Raw Water Transmission Main Design between the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities, and Dow at a cost not to exceed $337,500, establish 10% contingency in the amount of $33,750, bringing the total cost to $371,250. Approved funding from the Water Division's Showen Bar Road Phase One Capital Account, and direct the general manager to execute the contract documents on behalf of the City Council.
Your second.
Second.
Moving and seconded. Carl?
Nothing more.
So, I don't know where else we could probably get into this, but I have a few questions if I could have John come up and talk a little bit about this. So, just in general, I find it interesting that we have a 36-inch ductile iron transmission main, and we're going to put in a 42-inch HDP-E, and the actual gallon per minute goes down. It's a 6-inch larger pipe. Are these IDs or ODs? Well, they're on the OD, but to get equivalent strength from HDP-E, SDR 11, like we put in Tongas Avenue, the wall thickness is like this. It's incredibly thick. The ductile iron pipe is only about 3/4 of an inch thick, so by comparison, just simply to get the strength to withstand the pressure of the pipe. So, thank you for that, but again, when I look at this thing, there's a part in Dow's where they explain the system that we have. So it says the raw water transmission main for potable water is a 12-inch steel pipe penetrated through the concrete head wall of Rock Tunnel Terminus. And then it parallel-pipeline transitions through a valve, and their upside's a 16-inch, and then 20-inch high-density polyurethane, and then it goes again, the parallel 20-inches go to another 18-inch, and then to a 16-inch, and it goes through the coronation plant. So, this 42-inch pipe that we're putting in is fed by a 12-inch line? Yeah, this is the tunnel plug that was installed in, say, 1926. It's there at Ketchikan Creek, and at that moment in time, of course, 1926, the town was a lot smaller. The water system was much more primitive, it was just a gravity-fed, say, no disinfection. And so then, from that cast iron pipe, then as it was distributed through the town, it was actually using woodstake pipe. And it was probably not replaced, we don't have all the records, but it probably wasn't replaced again until we rebuilt the dam at Ketchikan Lakes in, I'll say, 1957. And as we rebuilt the raw water line, the thought was, even though the initial steel line was only 16-inch, the thought was, let's make the HDP line that's replacing it as large as possible, one to be able to move more water with less of flow restriction, and prepare for the future, which certainly we have. But you're right, the, within the coronation plant itself, it's 1956, and, you know, they used cast iron pipe. Again, the town, you know, the pulp mill had just actually been constructed, and, you know, probably the population was about like we see today, but at that moment in time, probably they didn't perceive that, you know, the fish processors would be using more and more water. But we just, essentially through the years, we have sort of a dog's breakfast, a pipe. Well, I guess my question is, is we're going to put in a 42-inch pipe, and usually your system is restricted by the smallest component someplace in that line, right? So if we're being fed by, I don't know what it is now, a 16-inch line, is that what you said? Well, yeah, it's a little bit of everything. We have some 30-inch, we have 36-inch, you know, we're preparing to replace it with the 36 with a chunk of 42-inch that, you know, the ID is approximately the same as it would be for a 36-inch, I'll say, ductile iron. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't oversizing our pipe, because the bigger the pipe, the more the cost, the bigger the dish, the more construction. And if our actual feed isn't going to change in the future from a 16-inch or 20-inch, whatever we're doing, and so I didn't know how that worked, John, and that's my question is. It's a head-scratcher. We have, a spilling of things have been built, you know, in, what, the last 95 years. Okay, I just don't want to build something at a larger cost over capacity that we're not going to use type of a thing, so that was my only concern. Mr. Berggruen?
Thank you. John, why is the design so expensive? $337,000? Why, what are they doing?
Well...
Aren't we just taking one pipe out and sticking another one in?
Well, essentially, the new pipe is going to be off to the western side of the street in where the sidewalk is, and so that's going to be a completely new alignment. The existing 36-inch that's buried in the street, in some places 15 foot down, will be abandoned. We'll fill it with flowable fills so that, you know, as the pipe continues to deteriorate, we don't wind up with large holes in the street.
So, it costs not much money to design, drawing the pipe under a sidewalk, $337,000?
Well, it's a complicated, I don't know, same matter. There's still the two transitions to tie back in to the existing 36-inch, you know, close to Valley Park Charter School and over by Showen Bar School. And that's going to be a complicated issue, just to be able to make the tie-ins there. And then, rather than where we cross Showen Bar Creek with two small 24-inches pipes, that's all, I just, I'm going to be abandoned, and there'll be a separate crossing across Showen Bar Creek above grade on concrete beam, much like we've spent Holdley Creek and Carlona Creek.
So we have to walk across it, then?
Well, I'll probably be careful, eh? And it'll be insulated also, right? There's an insulation packet that goes with this, and the design has to be such that it's buried at a depth that we don't have frost issues or freeze issues with the line? Yeah, precisely. The worst thing we could think of would be the line freezes and the community's out of water. And then there's also, there would be stress blocks in regards to any corners or turns or that stuff when it's buried in ground, or is it just... Yeah, HDP has quite a thermal coefficient of expansion, much more than, I'll say, ductile iron pipe, you have to allow for that, because you certainly don't want to stress it and wind up sometime in the future with structural failure. It's hard to repair. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing what this design is as it moves forward, and I think getting it out of the roadway is a great advantage to us in the future. I would also like us to consider what's coming at us in the future, and as you and I have talked before, it might be worthwhile putting a blind flange in in regards to maybe crossing Walker Field with a separate pipe or any of that kind of stuff, because in time, that one in Walker Field may need to be replaced, and we could keep it in service until we get the spare line across if necessary. Yeah, we'd like to dig down along the field that's not actually being used and inspect the pipe. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anything else?
I'd like to know when there's a time when that field is...
Right now.
Yeah, now.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
That brings us to vouchers. Oh, what's that?
We don't have vouchers.
See, we have vouchers, okay. Manager's report, Carl?
I have several items to go over tonight, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to start with Mr. Corpron, if he could come up to the podium. If you've been in the downtown area the last couple days about noon, you might have heard a mucklebang and see a lot of seagulls flying around the narrows. I'll let Steve tell you about it.
I was just going to review, Steve Corpron, Port and Harvest Director, I was going to give you a brief update on the pinnacle blasting that kicked off on Tuesday. Tuesday was the first test shot, it was an eight-hole shot, and they have underwater pressure monitors that are right at the site in like 2, 400 and out to 1,100 feet, and they also have seismic monitors on the dock, and then up into town over by the fire station and one back on Main Street, I believe. And they take the readings on this test shot and see if the readings are what they predicted they would be based on the size of the shot, and also make sure they're under the allowable thresholds, and they were. They ramped it up yesterday to a 21-hole shot. Everything still went well. Today was a 22-hole shot, I believe, and some of the holes had up close to the maximum of 75 pounds of explosives in each hole. And things went very well today as well. So tomorrow's going to be one more production-level shot of probably around 20. Everything goes well, they're going to shut down, send the crew home. Everything goes well, they're going to shut down, send the crew home, come back on the second, and then they'll start drilling. And they'll be drilling two shifts, 24 hours a day, two 12-hour shifts, and with the daily blast still being somewhere usually between 10 and 2-ish. They have, they can't shoot until at least a half hour after sunrise, and that's provided they don't see any critters on the list in that first half hour, and they can't shoot within an hour of sunset. So like today, that was, I believe, 3:17 if I remember right. So today's shot couldn't have shot at, after 2:17. It went off at noon, though, so there was no glitches in that. The warnings are going out on the VHF radio at 2-hour, 1-hour, 30 minutes, 15 minutes, and then 5 minutes. And 5 minutes is also supposed to be a siren. They had some issues with their siren this week. They've been using air horns instead. When they get back in January, I'm hoping that they have their normal siren back and hooked up. And then at 1 minute to go, it's a yelping siren, then they do a 10-second countdown, and then the shot. You hear, it sounds like distant thunder when it goes off. Of the three shots, only one, there was anything visible right at the shot. There was a little bit on yesterday's with a little bit of a heave or spray, maybe a foot or two right at the location of the shot, followed by a bunch of bubbles and that. The first and third shots, including today's shot, you didn't see anything until you just saw a little bit of bubbles, and because it was choppy out today, it was really tough to see that unless you knew what you were looking for. They've started on the panic side of the mound, and they're just, they just drill their holes eight feet apart. They have a template on the barge, and they're just going to work their way across the pinnacle and finish up on this side. And then after they're done with all those in hopefully early February, then they'll remove all the rock with the clamshell.
Do they move the barge off-site when they make those shots?
They move it about 60 feet.
Yeah.
So they're just not right over it. But I don't know. I've been trying to explain to some people, because they don't mat them or anything either, whatever is, once the explosives go in the hole, and they use the big casings to put it down like you're drilling a pile. The explosives are in like big sausage cases, it's like the consistency of mayonnaise. They'll load the shot down in there, and then whatever's left in the hole is packed with gravel. If you ever watched Mythbusters, when sometimes you'd see on the show they'd fire weapons underwater, it was about that far. And so there's really no need for mats because even the gravel, it does get blasted out, it's not going to go very far, so. But things seem to be going very well.
Good.
We're hoping not to hit any. The monitoring is just for this week, most of it. They will leave a seismograph on berth two during the January and early February production blasts. But the readings are well below what are allowed in the permit, which are below anything that would cause any damage, so.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
No, I saw one of the blasts come off, and I was really disappointed. I was hoping for ripple rock, where the... It looked like somebody broke wind in the bathtub. I mean, it just came out.
Yeah, and I went, I did, I did a radio interview, and we did a long interview with the paper last week that finally ran in, I think, yesterday's paper. But, and I made it very clear that we're just going to disappoint a lot of people. I know, and I'm sorry, but we want to, and we want to keep disappointing throughout the project. We don't want to have any spectacular... If you want to see what a spectacular one looks like, Councilmember Bergeron mentioned Ripple Rock, just Google Ripple Rock. It's from, it's a Canadian blast that was back, I think, in the 50s.
Seemed way over loaded.
Oh, yeah, Seymour Narrows, and it was packed a couple million pounds of explosives.
Or just peacetime blasts, just...
Yeah, just blew it up. But these are all, all these, all these explosives in each hole are linked, and they all go off microseconds apart. So it's kind of like a chain of firecrackers. If you put them all together and blew them all at once, it'd be a big explosion, but it's just basically a [bleep]. And so when they ramp up and do more shots at a time in January, it'll all still be within a second, but there'll just be more of them daisy-chained in. So it's not going to multiply. The maximum pressure will be just from what is in the 70-pound, 75-pound max in each hole, so.
The most spectacular part about it is when the seagulls take off.
Yeah, it's...
Hopefully those seals were harmed when they made the decision.
Thank you, Steve.
They basically just get up, they fly for a few seconds, and then they sit back down again, so. I wish it would take more than that, but...
Yeah, thank you. Carl.
Of course, you know whales pop in the...
Yes, sir.
If I could ask the assistant manager to come up to the podium. Last week at the budget deliberation session, the council directed us to contact NOAA relative to the whale habitat issue and petition for a public hearing in Ketchikan. NOAA has responded to that, and I want Lacy to tell you what the response was.
Lacy Simpson, Assistant City Manager, I received a call yesterday from sort of the public liaison from National Marine Fisheries, who's been sort of heading up the different public hearings for this proposed top-back whale critical habitat rule. As I think the council is aware, there is a public hearing scheduled in Petersburg on January 6th. Both the city and also the borough submitted letters requesting a public hearing in Ketchikan, and that request has been denied. So the bright side of this is that the hearing in Petersburg will be, they'll have a web interface, so you can stream the hearing, you can participate by phone, and it may also be broadcast on their radio station, which may be picked up by ours as well. So there'll be other opportunities to participate remotely and hear the presentation and gain more information about the proposed rule.
But can, is what they have at the legislature's office, where they do the phone?
I can certainly ask that. Yeah, I can certainly ask that. Tomorrow, I'll have information on the details for the public hearing and how to participate, and we can get that to the council and out to the public as well.
Send the people to go there?
Yes.
Like we do with all the other things.
Thank you.
Few others. We had a report in the packet relative to the state's condemnation of property relative to the Dravina Access. In the city's case, we're talking a couple of minor riderways, and we don't intend to contest that unless the council wants us to do something else, but I just don't think it would be worth the time, given what we might be getting back in remuneration. Relative to direction you gave last week during my evaluation on the city website at the port page, we have drafted a response relative to our port website. That is up, it will also be put on the city council page tomorrow as well. And we're just trying to, I guess, give a better comprehensive explanation of what we're trying to do relative to the port RFP. I think we did that fairly well. Mr. Holman was at the mic earlier this evening and referenced the meeting that took place at the chamber Tuesday night. I laid another report on the table. At that meeting, Mr. Tibbles, who was representing CLIA, indicated that he felt there was a need for greater discussion between CLIA and the city, and as the council is aware, relative to a suggestion Councilmember Kuz made earlier this fall, we reached out to Mr. Tibbles and asked if he'd be willing to come down and meet with the council. He suggested an alternative approach using a small working group to start those discussions. I followed up Tuesday night and again reiterated our willingness to meet with CLIA, but I thought the first appropriate step was a meeting of the council as a whole. Mr. Tibbles called me this morning on another matter, and we talked about getting a meeting with the council. And if the council authorizes it, I'm going to reach out to him and try to get him for a meeting, either the first or second meeting in February. And then if there is a need, we can break out in a smaller working group format, as he suggested, and that might be productive. So I'm going to do that if there's no objection from the council.
I think we're a month late to do this meeting. If Tibbles can make it in January.
One of the reasons I wanted to hold off Councilmember Kuz is we're lacking one council member, and I think it's going to be very important to have a full council relative to those discussions. You're going to be doing interviews in January. I'm going to be gone the second meeting in January. I like to be here at that meeting, and I think it's going to be very difficult to get him here for the January 2nd meeting. That's just my position. If the council wants me to get him here and you don't want me, we can, we can try.
You know, if you're going to be gone the second meeting, I still think, well, even if we don't have a very short a council member, we need to start it the first of January. Otherwise, it's going to be way after we get whatever RFPs we get in here. I think we need to have a little bit of information background on what they're talking about before we start evaluating RFP requests.
Murray?
I recall, right, possible conclusion to the RFP wouldn't be till June or July, that sort of timeline? I don't, I don't think that the first meeting in February is too late, given that sort of time horizon for wherever this RFP may run.
The other thing I would add, the reason Mr. Tibbles called me this morning, I think it was a follow-up both to the meeting Tuesday night as well as a meeting earlier that day that the mayor and I had, and I'll speak to that in a minute. But he wanted to know if we would be receptive to viewing possible collaboration with CLIA relative to potential financing of improvements on the dock. I told him we would be more than happy to do that. We need to get a thorough understanding, and they're not at that point. They're trying to develop a conceptual idea. And I indicated while we'd be willing to look at that, it would have to be done in a dual track with the RFP. We wouldn't be stopping anything relative to the RFP. So he asked for some information. We're in the process of getting that to him, and we'll see, we'll see where it goes. So that discussion's underway as well.
Perfect.
The last item again, Mr. Holman referenced a meeting that took place on Tuesday. I think the meeting he was speaking to was a meeting that the mayor and I and the assistant manager had with Charlie Ball and Ralph Samuels. That means Genesis started long before RFP relative to the port. Mr. Ball had contacted me when he learned that we had offered to provide some financial support to Juno when they were thinking of an appeal, and the meeting finally coalesced this, this week. I won't speak for the mayor. I took the meeting as being very positive and constructive. I think both Mr. Ball and Mr. Samuels came in very skeptical of what the city was doing in terms of the RFP as opposed to collaboration with industry. I think we walked them through our thought process and reassured them that it was in nobody's interest if we were going to try to position Ketchikan such that it would not be competitive with other ports within, within Alaska. That, that makes no sense for us as a poor operator, let alone a community. We had some frank exchanges with both of them. We tried to reassure them that we were, in the RFP, that we specified certain capital improvements that the council's identified, but that we were open to other alternatives that industry might present. And I indicated to them that our own consultant had told us that, you know, now with Ward Cove as a community, we potentially had six burrs, and there might not be an immediate need for improvements for the first five, seven years, whatever the number was. And if anybody who is proposing on the RFP wanted to include that as part of their proposal, we would be open to reviewing it and making a determination in that there were no foregone conclusions relative to concession versus preferential birthing or timing of improvements. And that was an issue that was discussed Tuesday night at the chamber meeting, and that I think there was some misunderstanding that there were foregone conclusions that had already been reached as a result of the RFP process. And I tried to reassure the people in attendance at that meeting that I work for a council of very strong-willed individuals, and a consultant is not going to tell the council what to do, it'd be the exact opposite, that the council would instruct council and staff what to do. So I think between the two meetings, there was some very constructive discussion with one segment of industry that may have been not fully informed as to what the city was doing. And my impression was they left that meeting feeling a bit more reassured, and I'll let the mayor speak to his observations.
As Carl said, we bounced around a lot of different issues. We also talked about our recent rate increase, the reasons why, the rationale behind how we manage that, and that it wasn't necessarily reactionary to anything that happened in, you know, in the past, it was just the fact that we have needs. We talked about the aesthetic protection program. We talked about just a lot of different issues in regards to the port uplands and the community. And we also talked about the growing needs and benefits of the community in regards to infrastructure and the fact that, you know, we wish there's, there's a way that we can get better participation out of the industry, and they said there may be some, some avenues for that, they're not closed to that door. And they were here representing Holland, I think they're members of Holland America. But Charlie also wears another hat with CLIA. So, but I thought it was very good. I think that there was a good exchange. Again, I think that they had some pre-drawn conclusions that they thought different about when they left. And, and I want to tell the public that there's no pre-decided conclusions in regards to the RFP. We see what other ports are doing, we see what other parts of the world are doing. We have a need, and things have changed since we originally started down this road with the addition of two more burrs potentially in Ward Cove. But I think we need to let the process run out, and quite frankly, we don't know what the results of that'll be after the council looks through them and works with them. But I think it's important that we, we go through the process.
One other comment I would make relative to the chamber meeting Tuesday night, there was a lot of discussion about the agreement that CLIA reached with Juno relative to the litigation that had been ongoing. And I think it was important for us to note that that agreement really pertained to appropriate uses of revenues that the city and the port collect relative to dockage, wharfage fees, and CPV, that that agreement really did not pertain to leveraging any investment in Juno's burrs. And, you know, CLIA doesn't have assets that it can bring to the table relative to investment in any burrs at any port. And I think it was important to get that fact out as, as well, so.
Correct.
Again, I think both meetings were, were positive, and there was a lot of good knowledge put out there for, for community residents.
Yeah, just a question. Before we meet with... Before we meet with CLIA, I'd like to have more information about just exactly what they and Juno obviously agree to, because there was a laundry list upon that wall up there of big numbers, and I don't know where Juno's getting those, that money from to even distribute into roads and everything else that went, there's a lot bigger numbers than ours. And also, I'd be curious to know where their source of money is, because they've got two private docks up there, and I think two public docks. Are they getting a head tax off of the private docks too?
They are.
Okay, we need to know that kind of information, so that when we sit down and start talking, we've got some, something in our background, so between now and then, we can gather that.
Thank you, Dick.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else in regards to the mayor's report, any questions, concerns? So that brings us down to the city clerk's file?
None, Your Honor.
City attorney's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items. We did have one lay on the table that we didn't discuss, and it's for informational purposes, it's in regards to Mike Woodward's request for the council, and you have a full packet of information in regards to the step the city's taken to contact AMCO and look at the ordinance as it was written and presented. I think it's a little, it's not as generic as what we would do, because it spells out specifically individual company and things like that, so I think it needs a lot of work yet. And presently, we understand that the state doesn't have anything on their agenda in regard to discuss this, so I don't know, it would be up to the council members if they want to bring anything forward. Mark.
For public disclosure, I replied to Mr. Woodward, and with the clerk's help, she provided me that information. I sent him that string of emails, and then I just asked him the question, what his thoughts were about a resolution that talked about, that addressed it as an industry and not just an individual story.
So it just stays as it is now informationally, and I don't think there's, we haven't any process moving ahead with it, so it's worth that. I just want to make sure that we addressed it. So we're down to mayor and council member comment. We weren't, we're not going to need the first executive session, are we, Carl? We already took care of that.
You already acted on it.
Yeah, so that one scratched also. Dick.
Nothing, Your Honor, we've got two budgets done, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
Ken Lee.
Well, same thing, I'm kind of burned out right now, but yeah, happy holidays, and see you next year.
Thank you.
As my grandmother would always say.
Sam.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Dave.
Happy holidays, everybody, and Merry Christmas, and, you know, so let's do this again next year.
Mark.
I'd just like to thank all the city staff, department heads, the manager's office, the finance director, for all the work they do over the course of the year. Thank you to my peers on the council. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe, have fun.
Again, I would like to, Mayor Mark's remarks about the staff and all the hard work they do, and I appreciate the council, we had 40 meetings this year. That's a lot, that's a whole lot, but we had a whole lot to work with and a whole lot to do.
Lunch next year.
Yeah, and so, again, I appreciate all your input, interest, and dedication to doing this job, because it's not always the easiest thing to do. I have faith that we're going to move forward and get through the issues we have before us in regards to our raw water stuff, the fiber to Canada, and what we're doing with the bursts, there's some big projects going ahead. I also had an interesting conversation today with Sean Parnoyl, and there is, he's going to be visiting our community in regards to natural gas, and he's interested to see if Southeast Alaska would like to look at natural gas, because there's a potential for a terminal just north of Prince Rupert that will be shipping natural gas out of Canada, and there may be an opportunity for us to do some of that here. So I think it's an interesting idea, and I have some thoughts about that. As we go into this cruise stuff, you know, we talk about putting portside electric to them, but we're not going to have the hydro. But it's all about air emissions, and if we had a natural gas turbine, we could provide them with power at a cost, so we'd have a summer load in regards to providing power to the cruise industry, and then maybe in the winter, when we get short of power, we'd have natural gas to provide power and not run antiquated diesel engines and run up against air emission issues. So it's just an interesting thought, I think keep an open mind and listen to them, so. And happy holidays, stay safe if you're traveling, be careful, and enjoy the kids. Thank you.
[inaudible].